Good evening. Let's try this one more again. Good evening. How you doing? It's wonderful to see so many smiling faces, at least on that side of the table. But we're gonna go ahead and get started in a moment. Let everybody get seated. While we're doing that, one few housekeeping rules. We are broadcasting this. We will be streaming it live through our school's channel. And a couple of folks are doing Facebook Live, so we're gonna keep the noise down where we can. Also for safety reasons, the fire exit here, go around the corner, fire exit over there, down the stairs. Do not use the elevator, alright? We have, did everyone get a sheet? Well, first off, I hope everyone signed in. And then there's a sheet that we were passing out that you could take notes on, to follow up even after we have this session, okay? But I'll turn it over to Dr. Tina Schultz now, and she'll do our introduction.
I don't hear any claps. Oh, thank you. I feel so good. I really feel good to see everyone out here tonight. To know that you are this interested to give up a Wednesday evening to come and listen to the candidates who are here to tell you how they're going to help take care of the city of Niagara Falls. Again, I'm Dr. Tina Schultz. I am the founder and CEO with the Niagara Community Information Group, also known as NSIG. We are a nonprofit that meets every month, and we focus on four critical areas. Excellence in education, health and wellness, financial literacy, and civic engagement. Guess which facet this one is? Civic engagement. So I'm very, very pleased to see you out here tonight. We do have a very strong team of individuals that help us do what we do every month. It's Mr. Michael Barksdale, who just came in and welcomed you. We have Mr. Lawrence Blaber. They all hide out in the corner. Mrs. Jackie Castillo Blaber, who is not here at the moment, and Mr. Trent Hamilton. We do what we do for the community, because this is a community organization working for your good. We are also here by, with support from Niagara University. There's students in the political science. Mr. Dr. Riley is over there. You saw him when you came in. Thank you, Dr. Riley and his students. We also have support from OSC, our school's channel, with the Niagara Falls City School District. Thank you again for your help and your support, your technical support especially. As was mentioned, please make sure you have signed in, and you do fill out the survey, so we know what we can do to improve. We've done a few forums already, specifically for the Niagara Falls Board of Education, when those candidates were running. So we plan to do more, but we always want to make sure we improve with everything that we do. Right now, I'm going to have, oh, I need to mention restrooms people, on this door to the left. Okay, that's what we need to make sure. We had a couple of questions already. I'm going to have Mr. Michael Barksdale introduce himself and our speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So I am here to introduce our moderator for tonight. But before I do that, I would like to kind of level set what's going on tonight. Our team came together with some questions that are based on the city charter, the do's and don'ts in the city of Niagara Falls. This gives you an idea, to give you an insight as to what the city council's role is and what it is not. And this is what you'll base the, you'll, you know, assess what the candidates have to say in that regard. Once we came up to questions, we had the political science department at Niagara University vet those questions for neutrality and relevance. So this is a group effort, a collaboration, that we'd like to get everyone in the community involved, and also to use the local expertise that we have. And with that, we say some of the local expertise. We want to introduce our moderator for this evening, Mr. Saladin Allah. He's an educator, award-winning producer, and author of 24 books, five of which are in activism archive in the British Library. He is a featured subject matter expert in the award-winning IMAX film Into America's Wild, narrated by Morgan Freeman. The six-part, award-winning docu-series Enslaved Executive, produced by and starring Samuel L. Jackson. A nation, United Nations short documentary of International Day of People of African Descent. I was able to watch one of those episodes, and it was really intriguing. Want to make sure you get out and check that out. Again, our very own Mr. Allah was heavily involved in that. He is also the Director of the Community Engagement at the Niagara Falls Underground Railroad Heritage Center, Public Projects Coordinator for the Niagara Falls Heritage Area, excuse me, National Heritage Area, and International Civil Society Working Group Member for the United Nations Permanent Forum on People of African Descent, and the founder of the Atlantis School for Gifted Youngsters. That's only a snapshot of the individual who's be moderating tonight, okay? With that, we want to bring up Mr. Saladin Allah.
What up, y'all? How y'all doing? Okay, it's good to see everybody here this evening. Before we start, I just want to first acknowledge our candidates. You know, it's important that we recognize the fact that they had the courage and the conscience to step forward to represent us as residents. They all may have different political perspectives, but all of them are here because they want something better for our city, right? So we give them a hand first and foremost. So to kind of give you an overview of the agreements, I don't call them rules, you know? I taught pre-K, and we have group agreements as pre-K students. You know, rules feel a little bit too strict, right? So some of the agreements that we have tonight is we're gonna have a limited time in terms of people responding to questions. As you can see, we got like a whole hockey team up here, right? And we want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak. So initially, we're gonna have one minute for people to do like their opening introduction, and then to respond to questions, they're gonna be two minutes each. We have our lovely timer right here, and she's gonna be holding up signs to let people know when they're at the 30-second mark, and then when their time is done. If they go over, I'm gonna cut them off, just like the chairman of the city council does right now. And I'm gonna treat it just like that, and if you keep going over, we gonna have law enforcement take you up out of here too. Is that cool? Could we do that? Right? And, and look at this as like on-the-job training, right? Because they get an opportunity to experience what it feels like to have so much to say in so much little time to be able to do it, right? Okay, so could we all agree to that? Word. Thank you. Okay, so now, my brother Michael talked about these questions are gonna be based upon the city charter. By showing hands, how many people have seen the city charter? Okay, everyone that didn't raise their hand, we encourage you. You need to study our city charter. That is our city's constitution. It is the rulebook in how we operate and how the city actually functions. If you don't know what that is, you may not fully understand what their job and responsibility is. One of the things you'll also realize is that we've been consistently electing people to office who have never looked at the city charter before. And it's important that they understand what those rules and regulations are. And so that you know who you can go to if you need certain things that are handled. Oftentimes, we have people that come up and show up to city council meetings, and they're talking to the wrong people and asking the wrong questions. That is not their role and responsibility. And it's important that you know what their role and responsibility is, and then also what yours are, because they need help as well, right? Okay, so we're gonna start off with the first question. Michael, this is gonna be number, number one. And this is based upon, huh? Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go in this order as well, and you got one minute to kind of make an opening statement. Tell us who your favorite superhero is. No, you ain't gotta do all of that. But just let us know who you are and why you're here. Why do you want to represent our city? Thanks.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. My name is John Kenny. First and foremost, I want to thank the organizers of the forum for giving us the opportunity to speak for you. I'm a retired city worker, for most people know. I served 35 years working in both Department of Public Works, Parks, the Police Department. I did all aspects, Water Department at one time. I'm a widowed father of two boys, raised in the city, 2025, 2021. I jumped into the race because I believe I have a background in both how the workings of the city goes, both on the worker side and the management side, as I served three years before I returned as the Director of Public Works. So I think I bring a unique mindset and knowledge to City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everybody who came out today. My name is Noel Munoz. For all of you that don't know me, I'm a businessman in the city of Niagara Falls. I'm a family man, and I'm a concerned citizen like many of you are, and that's why I'm here running. I'd like to say these are pretty loaded questions, and it's quite a lot to get through with only two minutes. So if I didn't answer it to your, to your liking, it's because of the time constraint, and I'd be happy to talk to anybody after. Thank you.
Good evening, Niagara Falls. My name is Bridgette Miles, and I am running to become the first African-American woman to serve on our city council, something that is much needed. I am here to tell you, I have almost 10 years' experience in city government. Although I have that experience, the fire has been set low for me, so I'm here to tell you that God is good. Keep the hope, and believe that change is coming. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to answering the questions tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone, and I also too want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's a nice crowd, and it's always good to see people participating in city government. I also want to thank the moderator and the sponsors of this event, Niagara Community Information, and of course, Niagara University. My name is John Accardo, and I am the endorsed conservative candidate in this year's race. I'm a retired insurance executive here in the city of Niagara Falls. I served on the council from 1992 to 2001, so if you do the math, you can figure out how old I am. I, you know, I, I'm here because I think the city is a good city. I think it's a good place to live. We've got some issues here that we've gotta, we gotta fix. One of the disappointments I see is that some of the same issues are still ongoing for the last 25 years. So we'll get more into that as the evening goes on.
Good evening. I am Councilman Dante Miles. I'm running for reelection on the write-in ballot here. I'd like to thank everyone also for coming out, and the moderator, and all of the NSIG that is hosting this tonight. My total job outside of, you know, making sure that we manage a fiscally responsible budget is to make sure that I allow the people the opportunity to engage in the space that we operate as a city councilman and how we spend your tax dollars. So I think it's very important that, like such as today, that, you know, we have more community engagement. So I want to help, I want to continue to be a voice for the people, and to allow the people to have a voice within City Hall as we make those decisions as to where these finances and monies are allocated. So that, that's all in the nutshell who I am.
Good evening. Thank you all for attending this evening, and so you could learn more about the candidates that are running. I'm Tanya Barone, and I'm running for a seat. I'm a wife, a mother, a grandmother, a real estate agent for almost 20 years. I am a wildlife rehabilitator for almost 20 years, licensed in the state of New York. I helped to develop a non-for-profit animal rescue in 2012 called Diamonds in the Rough Animal Rescue, which is still operating today. I look forward to serving my community, and I'm here to be a voice for the people and advocate. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I love you all. Thanks for coming. I love all the candidates. Thanks for putting your name in the hat. My name is Vincent Colley. I'm a born and raised here, right in Niagara Falls native. I'm an engineer, a deacon. My job is to solve problems, and that's why I got in this race, because we have a problem in Niagara Falls. It's a great city, and we have a problem. We have many problems, and they need to be solved, and we need the right people to get in there to do it. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Councilman David Zajac, much like Councilman Miles and one of the incumbents seeking reelection. Born and raised in the city of Niagara Falls, raised on the back of a locally-owned business that was started by my grandparents in 1949, Zajac Finerhome, that my brothers probably run today in the third generation of ownership. That's the way my family chose to give back to the community. I believe my best way to give back is being involved in city government, as I have been over the past four years, and being part of decisions that are making our city better and more prosperous. So that's why I'm in this race. God willing, I hope come November, that I will be granted another four years to continue doing the work with whatever the council body makeup may be in the administrations. Lastly, I just want to point out that I did notify one of the organizers that I did have a prior engagement that was originally gonna make me not able to make it tonight. I was able to move some things around to be here. Unfortunately, I do still have that prior engagement, so I may have to cut out early. I just wanted to make that clear, so when I cut out, I cannot want to interrupt where we are at that particular section.
I just asked you all of the questions right now, then. Now, before we get into our questions, keep in mind that these questions are gonna be based specifically on our city charter. And they're gonna be specific questions, meaning the questions that I ask these candidates. If I think that it's unclear how they answered, or they're dancing around and not being a direct, I'm gonna rephrase the question. Can we agree to that? Okay, because I didn't come here to BS, and I know you as residents didn't come here for that either. We need to be direct and make sure that people are seen for who they actually are. Can we agree with that? Okay, thank you. So the first question, we're gonna talk about community voices, and that's important that we center our community here. So this is the candidate Kenny first, and then we're gonna go down the line. The first question is, what's the most important thing that you've learned from listening to voters during this campaign that you didn't fully understand before?
I would say that the biggest thing that I've learned is, why is there such a big divide in this city? We're talking to so many people, didn't matter their party, their race, their gender. Everyone here wants the same thing. We want our city to flourish, and we want a city to be proud of. Basic services are the main things too, your streets, your trees, your sidewalks. But if it's not theirs being done, they're not happy. If we do a street on 76th Street, the people on 75th are upset. If we do a street on Garden Avenue, the people on Grove are upset. Why wasn't theirs done? They turn it around and they attack our city workers. It's not fair to them. I worked under seven different mayors, and I'm amazed at the fact, and I've seen it, the divide that we have, these mayors or even council people, they're not even in office in a year, and people are already asking for them to be removed. It doesn't make sense. We need to work together. The division in this city needs to stop, and we must come together and work together. If we want to move forward to being its great city and one to be proud of, that is what we need to do.
Thank you. It's a great question. One of the most important things I've learned while running this race is that residents don't feel like their voices are heard. They don't feel like they have a voice at the table or a voice in City Hall. It's something I obviously understood, but didn't fully grasp it until I decided to run. This deep connect, this deep disconnect didn't just start now. It started over many generations, and it's part of the reason that Niagara Falls looks the way it does today. What I want to do is bring people back to City Hall and give you a voice at the table. This starts with your council members. It starts with your elected officials. It starts with myself and the people sitting up here at this table with me. City council isn't just about passing vote, passing the budget, or collecting votes, or voting on ordinances. It's about making sure that government is working for you, and working for me, and working for all of us. My commitment to you is to create more opportunities for residents to be able to be accessible to myself, and hopefully to the others sitting here, and hopefully rebuild the trust in City Hall together, and get back to city council members representing you at those seats at the table. Thank you.
The most important thing I've learned from the residents is that the same complaints that I entered almost 10 years ago under the DICE administration still exist. Basic, basic issues like trees, being on a tree list for 10-plus years, sidewalks, streets, youth programming. So what I intend to do is go department by department and set up a streamlined system. So what I intend to do is go department by department and set up a streamlined system where the issues are logged, they're tracked, and we follow up with the constituents. Childbirth is hard, losing my mom, death is hard, politics shouldn't be hard. It is what it is, do what's right for all people, listen to the constituents, and work together to run our city.
I don't disagree with anything that the first three candidates said and I probably will agree with the next group of candidates here. But Bridgette, I'll go back, you went back 10 years, I'll go back 25 years. It's the same issues that I faced as a councilman back in the early 90s that we're still dealing with today. And that in my mind is unacceptable and that's what makes people frustrated. You know, we're just not solving the problems of the city. And I don't know if it's the city charter, like the moderator alluded to, but it certainly, we're not getting the job done. And we've had all kinds of different council people, we've had all kinds of different mayors and people are still dealing with sidewalks, they're still dealing with trees, they're still complaining about the streets and they're complaining about a lack of progress in this city. In fact, if anything, people are more frustrated, they feel like it's almost slipped backwards and not even maintained. So I think a job as a councilman is, you know, try to move some issues forward and try to make us all proud to live here in the city of Niagara Falls.
One of the big issues that I've noticed while canvassing the city of Niagara Falls is that we have been using pretty much the same apparatuses and the same vehicles to solve problems and we're trying to find new answers using old metrics. We don't have the same population density that we once had here in the city of Niagara Falls. It's not 115,000 people, we lost well over half of our population, which means we lost well over half of our tax base. But what happens is we find ourselves in local government continuously, like I like to mention, rubbing two quarters on the table hoping that it's going to turn into a dollar one day. That's not how it operates and also the fact that there's a misconception as one member of the body of five can change anything by themselves. Everything has, three out of five votes will get something in. So the idea that there's any one person that's up here on this panel that can change anything, that's what I've learned, that's a very big misconception. If you don't have a majority vote, you can't pass legislation. Doesn't matter how hard you fight, doesn't matter what you do to get it in, if you don't have a majority vote, you don't pass the actual legislation.
So, part of being a council member, council candidate, I've had the opportunity to listen. This question asks, what did you not fully understand before approaching the residents door-to-door? My answer is nothing. There is nothing that any resident has told me that I did not fully understand before entering this race. When I say I fully understand as a resident, I'm one of the community. A lifelong resident with the same chief complaints that everybody in this city has for decades. The rats, the blight, the dilapidated houses, the potholes, the garbage, the homeless. No programs for our youth being cut, the funding, all of it. The economic crisis that we're facing and the housing shortage. That's why I'm running. I'm here to be a voice for the people, not only because I feel like I can do the job well, but I'm also understanding, compassionate, empathetic, and I get it.
I love this city, I love the people here knocking on doors and being at your doorstep is my favorite part to do, to hear your voices, to hear what you have to say, to hear what you're going through, to hear what's on your heart, to hear what's on your mind. Some people say things, some people don't. But I love it all because I know where I ran and I see a lot of changes and I hear the voice of the community. This mayor has our city on the wrong track. That's what I hear from him. You talk about the path and you know we've been on a downhill slope for a while. I'm 41 years old, we've been sliding down here for a while, but we seem to be in hyperspeed. And I love every single one of y'all, I love the candidates here, but people are tired of the good guys being punished and the bad guys being elevated. We're tired of people who've been around Niagara Falls for a while, they get their name dusted off and they want to run for office. We're tired of people who've already been working in the system, coming in the system to try to fix it, but they've already been in the system for all these years, what have they done? We're tired of people, the community is saying, we're tired of people getting sweetheart deals and then all of a sudden get in government to try to get on the other side. They're trying to say they want to fix the government. We're tired of people who worked for the mayor and then want to get on the other side and try to do something with the mayor. That's what people are tired of. We're tired of the connections, we're tired of the nonsense going on and we need people. We need a unified front of three council people that want to fight for the people. Thank you.
I would say it's not just, you know, this election, but in general, over my tenure on the council and even in the previous campaign, the common frustration that people have is the pace at which government works, right? I mean, council members get complaints, concerns, ideas from residents. Some of you may or may not know, no council member can go directly to any department head or any city employee. Per the city charter, we have to go through the administration for, I'll say, permission to reach out to said department head to get any clarification or anything done. That slows the process down. I understand partially why it's there, but in the end, when there's no response given, the only thing we can do as council members is follow back up with the administration and hope that they give us a response. Sometimes we get it, sometimes we don't, and sometimes the issue is addressed and we're not notified until the resident may email us, call us, or see us and say, hey, thanks for, you know, get my sidewalk fixed or my tree cut down. We may have no idea and any council member that here or previously can attest to that. So I definitely think that, you know, unfortunately, we're hindered by the current version of the charter and how that operates. But that's how we have to operate as city council members and I understand the residents' frustration, but we're doing unfortunately the best we can to try to get that taken care of.
Thanks for bringing that up because we're going to expound on that a little bit more as well on mic number five. So the next question is, the role, let me preface it by saying this, the role of a council member involves mastering complex procedures from drafting legislation to managing multi-million dollar budgets. There is no mandatory training for this job. Let me repeat that. No one has training to get up here and to serve as a city council member. So unfortunately, it's on them to come up with some type of strategy of how they can learn this job. Some people never do it. So the question is, what is your specific concrete plan to rapidly get up to speed and ensure that you are an effective legislator within the first 90 days of you being elected? I'm going to start with you Noah.
Very good question. It's very simple. I would use the same approach as I used in business very early on and that's listening, learning, and surrounding yourself with the people that have the knowledge, whether it's those that have came before you or going and looking at other municipalities to find the answers. I commit to meeting one-on-one with all the department heads, contrary to what people think. I will meet with the department heads, I will understand the role of everybody in government in order to help them and so they can help us. We all want to be successful, so it's important that we all communicate with each other. The quickest way to get a real picture of what's going on in the city is to talk with all the department heads and talk to council members that have come before us as well. I'll lean on the partnerships, whether it be from council members. There's no shame in asking questions. A lot of us aren't going to know everything yet, but that's why we're here. So the first 90 days really are to get acquainted with the job, to understand the charter and to understand how city government works from the inside out by asking all the questions and looking at prior legislation, prior bills that have passed and... 30 seconds, yeah. So I bring real-world experience to the table. I'm the only one up here that's in charge of tens of millions of dollars of all of your money. Tens of millions of dollars of all of your money on a yearly basis and that does correlate to city government. Negotiating through deals, managing budget, that's directly in my skillset. So that's what we'll bring to city government.
With almost 10 years' experience in city government, on day one, I have a pretty good idea of how government works. I had great training under the DICE administration, the good, the bad, and the ugly. So this is a full-circle moment for me. What I'll do is I'll take any new thing, any new job, you need training. So what I'll do is I'll take advantage of training offered through the New York Conference of Mayors for elected officials and I'll go to regular seminars, I'll talk to seasoned council members and I will have to sit down with our mayor and city administrator and that's something that you would have to do in order to run this city together.
As I mentioned earlier, I served on the city council for nine years. So for me, it would be like riding a bike. You know, you haven't ridden in a while, but you just get back right on and ride. I can tell you this, that even with a degree in business administration and having run a business for almost 40 years, the city budget is a big, it's a big document. You have to understand how it's put together, you have to understand how it works. And even after nine years, I can tell you that there were still things in it that I didn't fully understand. There's a lot of moving parts to it, but I think one thing that's important and, you know, anybody up here who's going to have to deal with this in the next coming years, the city, the budget really starts in January. You know, you have to meet with the department heads, you have to get to know the employees, you have to get to know the jobs they do, what the department does, and you work through it from there. So that when the budget comes out in October, you know, you have a pretty good idea of the functions of the departments and how they operate. It's a cumbersome budget. I'd like to see priorities set in the budget so that we can measure from year to year, you know, if we've made progress. The council, the mayor should sit down at some point in time and come up with priorities and then mark those priorities every year to see if we've made any progress.
So when it comes down to what we're talking about, us not being able to talk directly to the department heads, one, it's a lack of communication and a lack of transparency. So therefore, the city charter that we're talking about right now needs to be revisited and changed. And guess what? We as a city council body with the majority vote and it has to be a majority of the people in the council willing to do so and not just talking again, we can actually change the city charter to give us back the oversight power that we need in the city council. That's one. But two, no, we have, there is no direct training. However, I've been showing up at City Hall since 2016. So I didn't wake up one day and decide to run for city council. I actually put in work and I actually pounded the same podium that I actually face as a city council member today. So the thing is, is this, what is kind of baffling is that you have to show up. Period. You have to show up. How do you even get a grasp of how local government runs if you don't show up to a free meeting? The meeting is free, no one has to pay to get in. So therefore, you want and you can actually meet us and talk to us and expound on maybe something that we voted on or what we may have said. But if you don't show up, you're going off of what hearsay or possibly what you, a narrative that may go, that may be handed to you outside of city council, but you can't hold me accountable outside of my job. Show up.
When I began coming to City Hall almost two years ago on a concern and grievance of my own, I started pounding the podium just as Mr. Miles just stated. And that's how I started. It opened my eyes to so much more than what I was there for and led me to this path that I'm on now. A collaboration, not only inside City Hall with people that are doing this job currently, we lean on them for insight, information, education, training, because like Noah had said previously as well, we're not going to know everything. Okay, there is no formal training. But when you have the backbone and the fortitude and the ethics and you want truth and transparency in your government, you will work as hard as I have and others have to be in this spot today. Now, it does not only take collaborating inside City Hall, but outside of City Hall as well. The voice of the residents is very important. They are my number one priority. They will continue to be my number one priority. And there are a lot of nonprofit organizations working so hard they don't get the recognition in our community. Collaborating with them as well is very important. And I continue to do what I've done for almost two years now and that is make connections, meet new people, and see what we can do together to make a difference.
I just want to summarize the question so you can understand where I'm coming from. The question is asking, if you get elected January 1st, 2026, what are you going to do in those first 90 days? Well, first of all, you're already ramping up to know what you're going to do in those first 90 days because you're supposed to be talking to the people, you're supposed to be knocking on doors, you're supposed to be attending meetings, you're supposed to be talking to the previous council people, to the current council people, to the other running mates. So what are we going to do in the first 90 days? Anybody in this room can be a councilperson, can be a legislator. That's what we should be doing, we should be raising up the next people to be councilpeople. So number, absolutely, amen. So first 90 days, number one, you reach out to business owners, you reach out to community leaders, you reach out to nonprofits. I have a relationship today, I received a letter on one of my first days as a city councilperson. It was a letter from a nonprofit. Never met her, didn't know her, I opened up the letter, I said, this is a group in Niagara Falls, I gave her a call and visited her and we've been running together ever since. That's what it takes to be a city councilperson. You got to want to care about the community. I can talk technical about Robert rules of order, about the charter, about Section 314, 38, 310, I can talk about all of that, but if you don't care, if you're not authentic, if you have connections, if you have the wrong motive of getting on this stage to talk to the people, if you're trying to get it, not for the people, but for your own self-fulfilling reasons, you want to feel as a councilperson and the city's going to continue to spin our wheels because we keep electing the wrong people. Let's have a real conversation tonight. Let's have a real, let's look at real characteristics to find the right people to represent.
I would have to say my biggest lesson I've learned over my tenure on the council and that I believe I've shared with former councilman Colley when he was with us, is I believe you have to have a good balance of open-mindedness as well as being steadfast. You know, just because you may not be of the same party affiliation I am or we may have disagreed on something previously, you shouldn't let that cloud your judgment going forward. That goes for working with council members or the administration. Because in the back of our minds, or in the front of our minds, I'm sorry, the betterment of Niagara... betterment of Niagara Falls should be what we're all here to do. So Republican, Democrat, Conservative, whatever it may be, Niagara Falls should come first. If you're not here for that reason, you know, I think you're in this for the wrong reason. As for drafting, excuse me, drafting legislation, you know, it is a big collaboration. You do have to collaborate with your council members, the administration when applicable, as well as the office of corporation council. You should be looking at the tactical portion of any legislation as well as any legal ramifications when you're looking to put something forward. You know, you could try to do something yourself, but as council member Miles hinted on in a previous section, you know, you're only one of five. So you need at least two of your council members to join you, and ideally, you're doing something good for the city where the other four want to join you as well. So that would be my advice for any future council members.
And so as, as was shared, city council members, in order for them to deal with any city employees, they have to go through the city administrator and the mayor. So for example, some of you like to come to city council meetings and scream at the council members about certain things that is department issue. That might be a forestry issue department or DPW's problem. As council members, they cannot go to the head of DPW and forestry in order to tell them what to do. The executive branch is responsible for managing the day to day operations of our city services. And like was shared, that can cause a delay sometimes because for whatever reason, maybe the administrator or the mayor might be out of town. You might need an issue that needs to be addressed that day. But a city council member does not have the authority to address that issue. So the next question is, you didn't, you didn't go already? My bad.
You said you're going to go off every once in a while, so I didn't want to interrupt.
Okay. My bad.
It says that, how would we ramp ourselves up? Number one, if you don't know, you ask questions. There's, it was stated, there is no dumb question, there is no stupid question. If you don't know, you need to ask. I stated that I've worked quite a few years for the city. I served as a union president, sat on, looking at the city council, fighting for union issues for many years. I commend the city councilmen and councilwomen that have been up there because it's not easy when people are at that mic screaming and yelling at you when the, like Sally's just said, a lot of the stuff is department stuff, department head stuff. When I was a department, they couldn't, you couldn't come to me, you'd have to go through the mayor. But I would ask questions with the people that have served in there. Get their ideas and their, their thoughts. If there's opportunities for training, which I've been told, there is opportunities for training. I avail myself to those opportunities. Get sped up, get background on what I'm looking at. I've put together multiple budgets within the city. I've dissected budgets within the city, put them together as the director of public works, dissected them as a union president. So I've moved money here, there, and everywhere. I would like to open up an agenda for communication and push for open communication. I know how the charter works and it protected me as a director that I didn't have to get calls all the time, but sometimes I did need the call. And I was allowed to get them if we did it the right way pursuant to the charter and it went to the administration. But open communication is what needs to be done between, for us to move forward.
It's my time now?
I'll reel back to our moderator at this time.
Okay. And so let me continue what I was saying in regards to that requirement through our city charter where you have to go through our city administrator or mayor in order to directly deal with our departments. The question is, how do you balance that requirement with also maintaining your responsiveness to our citizens and them understanding that you're just not dragging your feet and you're doing everything that you can in order to address our needs? How do you balance that? Number seven.
Just to be clear, the mayor of the city of Niagara Falls was elected by the people. So in order for a council member, in order for a council member to help move the city forward, you need three people on that, on your team as your alliance. You need to be able to sit down with the mayor and the city administrator. Open communication. You're not going to get anything done. We're going to be in the same situation that we're in now if you can't communicate with the chief of the city. No matter how you may feel about him personally, as a leader, you got to put that feeling aside and sit down at the table for the people. So if you have a voice for the people, then you need to put your personal feelings aside and sit down at the table and represent the people. There's no way around that. There's no way around that. You have to communicate with the mayor, you have to communicate with the administration if you want to move the city forward. Otherwise, we'll be stuck in the same situation we're in now. Thank you.
The city charter doesn't allow, or doesn't require the mayor to attend a city council meeting. So, and as the moderator did point out, that people come to council meetings and they complain to the council, but you can't go to the department heads. The simple answer to that, or the simple solution to that problem is change the charter, as Mr. Miles stated. That requires the mayor or the city administrator or the mayor's representative to attend the meeting.
So I think it's very important that we understand our role as a legislative member of the body. So there's the executive branch, and then there's the legislative branch. There is something that we're supposed to have, which is called checks and balances. So therefore, what happens is, is this, the council, we write legislation, we write law, we, the mayor can bring something to our table, but if it doesn't make fiscal sense, it doesn't matter if I sit with him ten days out of the week. If it doesn't make sense for the city, then you, if you're doing, if you're working on behalf of the people, then you would go ahead and you would pretty much go against that theory. So the thing is, is this, we have to make sure that we understand our roles. Our roles is not, see now, it's, it's good to work, it's okay to work with the administration. It's not okay to work for the administration. We have to understand who we work for. So when you get elected in this position, you work for the people. You work for the tax dollars of the people. You work for the quality of life of the people. You work for all of the different things that, that, that we deal with and the different aspects that, that the community members that come to that podium that we have to listen to, we have to work for that. Has nothing to do with the administration. He has his own branch of government. It's called the executive branch. We're the legislative branch. We have an imbalanced government. That's what we have now. So now it's time to balance our government back and receive, and like we, Mr. Caro had just made mention, and like I made mention earlier, we need to change the charter and stop trying to follow a failed system.
So in order for this to work efficiently and effectively, we need direct communication with our department heads. There should be no stranglehold and the city council. We should be able to freely talk to anyone when it pertains to the city as a whole, a residence issue, the whole community at large. So as Miles just said, Mr. Miles, the charter needs to be changed, period. There are many things in the charter, not just this that needs to be changed, but I'm not sure if you're all aware, the council has the power to investigate any department inside city hall. This stuff for the mayor's office. Why? That's what needs to be changed. We need to be able to investigate in question and ask for information in any city department. So number one, the charter needs to be changed. We have the power to change it. That's what we will work collectively to do. Because if we want direct communication and effective communication to solve these issues, we need to remove the stranglehold from our city and from the council. Give the council back the power that we were intended to have to begin with, not only for the council, but for the people.
So it's been mentioned before that I was on the city council back in twenty twenty-three, and this issue is an issue. However, get the picture, I want to talk to the director of economic development about how we're going to develop the city of Niagara Falls. It's an executive policy that that director says, Vincent, I can't talk to you, you got to talk to the mayor. So we can change the charter or change the mayor, but that's another point. You can still, you can still work within, you can still work it, you can still work your job by what do you do? You contact, if I had a resident, unlike we, I wish we could, trust me, we have to live in denial. I wish we could just call DPW chief and say, I need this tree removed on one, one, three, ABC street. Can you please do it? It's dying. This owner has been here for thirty years. They've kept it safe. They were trying to protect their family. Their family almost died. That's a real thing. The family almost died. Can we have this tree removed? I wish we could do that, but what's the reality of the situation? We put it back, we put the responsibility on whose responsibility it is. We send an email to the council, you call the, you send an email to the city administrator, to the DPW chief, to the mayor, and you put that resident, and I put you at their feet. You talk directly to the man who is responsible, to the men who are responsible to get that tree removed, to get that pothole filled. This is the question. How do we make, how do we still be effective even though we have a stranglehold on our people? We work a system because we get down with the people and we deliver emails, phone calls, smoke signals, anything. We put that resident at the mayor's feet and at the administration's feet. Thank you.
I mean, a lot of the previous council members or candidates kind of took some of the things I was going to say, but in the end, I mean, it still goes back to kind of what I said previously. You still have to be open minded when it comes to dealing with the administration or council members. You know, I'm not always going to agree with the mayor, but in the end, if a resident comes to me and needs assistance with something, it's my duty to go to the administration and try to get that answer. If I can't, via an email, follow up with another email. If I can't, try to set up a meeting or a phone call. In the end, it's incumbent on us to, you can't hold the grudges in this position. And if you do, the only ones that suffer are the residents. And I don't want to see a resident suffer as much as I may disagree with any administration or council member, I still have to work for the best part of the city and/or address that resident's concern. Again, it's not always done quickly. It's not always done at the pace I would like to see it, or the resident, or maybe even the administration or the individuals addressing it. But in the end, as long as you can follow up on it and get a reason to why it is not being addressed or why it's taking so long to be addressed, I think that's the information that we have to pass along to the residents to ensure that, to them, that we are doing the part of essentially being a middleman, unfortunately, middle person, sorry, to try to get their issue addressed or at least an answer of why it's not being addressed. It all boils down to communication, communication, communication. The residents call or the residents email the city council. All the city council has phones in their office, they have emails. In order to sit in this position as a city councilman, you need to do work. It's not just listening. To get that communication to the department heads, unfortunately, the way it is set up now is you go through the administration. And if that is changed in the future, then you can call directly to the department head, then council people will be calling directly to the department head. Unfortunately, our hands are tied at this time. You need to go through the mayor or the administrator. It's not, it doesn't bode well for some, but unfortunately, I, Salady said, he don't believe in rules, but those are the rules. And we have to deal with them until the rules can be changed. I got to get on the city council before I can do anything. I'm not supposed to be entering.
Okay, chill out, y'all. We got to, yeah, yeah, we, we got time, y'all. Y'all got to chill.
Something like that will be brought up and it will be discussed amongst myself if I'm lucky to get on, or whoever the five council people that were there, they will discuss it. And that's what the job of the council people are to do, is sit and discuss. We can't be fighting within on the city council because we want to change something amongst ourselves. The city council has to be one unified front, too. So when it comes to the residents, we need to, when they call, when they email, we need to be in city hall, answering that phone call, answering that email, and getting back to the residents on what we can do or what we can try to do for them.
Yeah, a lot of talk about changing the city charter here. Why not just do it now? Why are you guys waiting? Everybody's talking about it. All right, just do it, right? Have, have your people up there do it. Now, now we'll get on to the question. Where, where the, where the Latin dogs now? Just change, just change the charter.
Hold on, let's say what it is, what it is really to be a council member. What is the job?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Yo, you got it too. You got it too.
But what is the real job?
The real job.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, no, 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 no.
Okay, but what is the real job?
When we opened up, we talked about all of that. So just chill, we gonna get to some of the stuff that you have questions about.
The real job, being the bridge between residents and city government. The charter is clear, we can't have communication with department heads. It's more than likely there to prevent confusion, whether you like it or not. At the same time, residents want to feel heard. They want to know if their concerns are taken seriously. My plan is to be accessible, holding regular office hours and attending neighborhood meetings. For broader communication, I would commit to regular updates through council activities, through newsletters, through social media, and through community forums. People want to see that we're working for you and that we understand your concerns and where your tax dollars are being spent. They want transparency, they want responsiveness, and they want to build trust. And I want residents to feel that their voices matter every day, not just at election times.
So we're going to pack that a little bit further in regards to the charter. I'm going to pack that a little bit further. Can you describe, and this is for Mr. Caro, can you describe a specific current city issue that you believe requires legislative action, either a new local law or, or an ordinance? Maybe something more specific within the city charter that you see, or just something that you see generally speaking that, that needs to be changed?
You know, I, I don't think I'm mistaken by this, but, but I, I'm sure the people in the audience will know this. I don't believe that the current city charter has ever been codified. Okay.
Could you, could you elaborate on what that means?
I certainly will, I certainly will. The first charter, okay, I think was nineteen eighteen. I'm going to pull that number out of my, my, because that comes to my mind. The second charter was ratified by the citizens of Niagara Falls in nineteen eighty-eight. So what you do here is you have two city charters. You have two sets of rules, two sets of rules. Can you imagine if it was a football game or a baseball game and they had the old rules and the new rules, and they never codified the rules? How do you, how do you play the game? You know? So what you do in this case here, and this happened to be more than, more than I can count on, and I'm sure the current council members here will attest to this, you get the interpretation of the old charter, the new charter, and the interpretation of the rules. So you can make the rules do anything you want it to do. And I think that's the reason why the city of Niagara Falls has the problems it has today, because the government just doesn't work right, period.
I'm going to help Mr. Caro out really quick.
So actually, the city charter has been codified, and it was codified in 2018 by attorney Robert Restainow. No, no, it's literally changed, and it's an updated version that's in our office for 2018 that was codified with his ink. So he's able, and that's why we need to revisit it again, because he's able to go through and navigate and, you know, get through and without any type of accountability and without, because of the simple fact, it's his ink that actually codified and wrote the language that's in the city charter. That's why we don't have the powers that we really need to be an effective and efficient government, because we're, and that's why we have the chokehold strangle by the executive branch, because it was written by him a year before he actually ran for mayor. But it's legit, so in our, in our, in our office, the updated 2018 codified charter is, in our office, it was codified in language written by the attorney Robert Restainow before he ran for mayor. So therefore, for us to get to what Mr. Noah was saying, at the end of the day, in order to change the charter, you still need a majority vote. So if you don't have three people that's willing to do so, and I made it clear, my first time being, my first week of being in office, is that I feel we need to change the charter, but I just didn't get the support from anyone.
I'm here to support that idea. Couple key words we have to listen and recognize here. The word rules and the word game. Okay? This is a political game. You just know how, you have to know how to play the game. First thing we need to do is change the charter. But we need a team of three people on that council that will bring that unity and that yes vote, because otherwise, we're the lone wolf, right? We can see it already happening. We all know who the dictator is and who the pawns are in the story. Let's do some major changes to that charter and bring the power back to the council and to the people.
Yes, yes, indeed. I want to change the charter, no question. However, with that being said, what specific legislative action will you take, Vincent? What are you going to do? Well, for one, I'm going to name a couple, too, because they're both on my heart. I have a brother with cerebral palsy. I've knocked on a lot of doors with their kids that have autism. We don't have an ordinance for the ADA here in Niagara Falls. That's an ordinance and law that three people who want to fight for the people who are, who are not beholden to anybody, and they want to advance a agenda for the people, you will help make Niagara Falls ADA compliant so we have more accessibility for our, in this case, it was Americans with Disabilities, that's the Americans with Disabilities Act. We need that here, amen, and we need that here in Niagara Falls, so we have more accessibility for our residents. And number two, we're talking about legislative actions. What can the council do? If you're not bought and paid for, if you haven't been working for the mayor, if you haven't been around, and you need to be dusted off to run for the, to run as a puppet, and somebody said, if you're, if you can get a meeting, one-on-one with the department heads, are you handpicked or not? So anyways, with that being said, another one is, we don't know how much money, I've heard, we have heard numbers, but a document of how much money we've been spending on lawyers and outside council for this imminent domain debacle. We need three council people to sign on a revenue sheet to compel the administration to give the city council how much money we've spent on lawyers and all this other nonsense trying to get land we don't own.
I know y'all lit, but y'all got to chill, so everybody can hear. Everybody need to hear the candidates, y'all.
I'm also going to take a little beer away from the charter. Well, the candidates do have some very good points on that, and that's definitely something that the current council and incoming council can obviously look at and take some action on. I think a current situation that we can look at with legislation or ordinance is something that I've actually had discussion with one of my current colleagues on, and that is some form of e-bike legislation. You know, anyone in the room that has an e-bike, or knows someone has an e-bike, or your kids have an e-bike, grandkids have an e-bike, you know, they're an enjoyable thing to ride and use around. There's businesses in the city that rent those out to tourists and so on. There's broad rules in place by New York State, but I think we just need to refine something for the city of Niagara Falls. Because let's be honest, how many times this past summer alone did we go on social media or the news or the newspaper and hear about, you know, an accident on an e-bike or anything like that? And I mean, most recently, that young lady that was hit in LaSalle on one. And she was in the hospital for quite a while. Thankfully, she's made a recovery. But I think that's something current right now that I think the council can look at some legislation that, again, we're not reinventing the wheel, look anywhere across the state or the other states, and craft something that fits our local needs to keep e-bike users or e-bike motorists safe, as well as allow them to still have free range across the city.
Looking to talk about something that we could do, we just had a big issue in this city. It is pretty much pertaining to how RFPs are handled. Okay, I've sat and read many RFPs. I was given the time.
Could you clarify to everybody what an RFP is, please?
It's the proposal that is given from different groups, like if, we'll just use the ice cream, they received an RFP from two different groups on how they would handle the operations and how they would run it. So it's sheer, it's a request for proposal, right? So the way the RFPs, I mean, I had them to where I sat on the scoring committees and the review committees, and it was given five or six of them. And my job was to sit and read them, review them, and then give them a scoring system. My thought, and when I looked at them, when I read them, I always looked at them and read them to what was the best benefit for the city. And that might not have been the cheapest one or the most expensive one, it was the one that would bring the best quality of work, or the one that's been doing a great job in that field before. That's how I ranked my scoring. I feel that the city council should have someone always with, what city council, we pick in their own representative, and given the RFPs too, and give us a firsthand, let us read and let us be one of the scorers for the RFP. And now we're at the table with the administration and understanding, before it even comes to the city council for a vote, on one line or two lines on an agenda item. Thank you.
Well, first, I'd push for regular public reporting from departments like code enforcement and DPW, so the residents can see how many cases are being opened and how quickly they're resolved, and where resources are being allocated. Transparency will build trust. If something's not working, the council should dig in and ask the hard questions and work with department heads to get solutions in place. One issue that stands out to me right now is the condition of our city's housing stock. We have too many neglected, unsafe, dilapidated, boarded-up houses. This doesn't just drag down neighborhoods, it also drags down and discourages investment in our city. The council should take legislative action to strengthen property maintenance standards, hold absentee landlords more accountable, and we should invest, we should invest, we should introduce an ordinance requiring mandatory rental property inspections every few years with clear penalties for owners who repeatedly fail to maintain their properties. To develop that policy, I'd start by sitting down with landlords, tenants, code enforcement, to make sure we, to make sure we're creating something that's firm, but also fair and realistic. We should look at what's working for comparable cities and implement those practices here in Niagara Falls. We want to, we all want to make sure the city is running effectively and responsibly for the people that live in here. Thank you.
For me, based on a current charter, what I would do on day one is create a resolution, a resolution, excuse me, to implement three advisory committees. The first would be Streets and Infrastructure, Youth Opportunities, and Small Business Committee, based on the current charter. What those groups would consist of is people from all walks of life, employees, unions, to come together as one and listen to the concerns of the constituents. By investing in this group, we will be able to come together as one, we will be able to communicate with the mayor, the administration, whoever that may be, and move the city forward.
So I, as a side note, I just wanted to say that all of you are sharing some very great ideas. And regardless of this election, it is my hope that you stay engaged, because you may have people that may get elected that may not carry further that vision that you have. So please, stay engaged regardless of whom it was. So now I'm going to talk a little bit about economic development. So Mr. Miles, my question to you is, from your perspective as a council member, what is one capital project or long-term investment that you feel is most critical to the economic future of Niagara Falls?
So one major factor that we have in the city of Niagara Falls is that we were once a industry city that gainfully employed hundreds and hundreds of families. A lot of people migrated from down south up here to get a job, making more money than they probably made their whole life. Here's the reality, the reality is, is this, there is no more heavy industry around. They've up and left. One major investment would be, and here's the thing, it doesn't necessarily has to come out of our tax dollars, is to basically hold accountable these different agencies, these different plants that up and left, and they left our city a brownfield site. So what happens is, is one, hold them accountable, also there's federal funding that's available for the remediation of this land. So instead of us looking at Buffalo Avenue and saying, oh, that was once oxychemical and that was once DuPont, we can actually fight to get federal funding to actually remediate that land and actually make it into something that could be productive for the city, something that can generate revenue. It's on our prime real estate, it's literally right off of the water, it's the first exit you get into when you hit into the city of Niagara Falls, it's Buffalo Avenue. And what happens is, is we find ourselves just like the Love Canal, we see something that was once something, and then it became horrible, and we look at it and we talk about what it was, but we allow the blight to stay there. What we need to do is, we need to start addressing some of these issues. So if we're going to invest in anything, we need to invest in those spaces. Create, and we can create something that could be, whether it becomes something that that's tourism, or whether it's just some land that we can put back on a tax base, that's worth a lot of money. If you bet on East River Road or West River Road in Grand Island, guess what? Those are multimillion-dollar houses. Why? Because they're right off of the water. Why aren't we utilizing that?
So I believe that instead of tackling the root causes of our issues here in the city, we're putting a Band-Aid on things. Okay? And in order to move forward with economic development, and for businesses to want to come into our city and feel that it is a good investment, we have to start from the bottom up. So we can't start with a huge, big project like Centennial Park Arena and spend over $200 million that we don't have and expect people to stay here after they watch a hockey game? It does, we have to bring common sense back into city hall. Does it mean, or does that sound backwards? So we have to start by cleaning up the crime here. Number one. Corruption, number two.
Yes.
Maybe we should put that at number one.
Number one.
But we have to clean up our city, okay? Is anyone going to drive away from the arena after their game? And where are they going to go in the city?
Nowhere.
If they're going to feel like they're lost and they took the wrong road, and they're going to try to find the easiest way back home as possible, how can we expect development here when our city looks the way it does? We need to clean it up, clean up the crime, clean up the garbage, tear down the nasty-looking houses, and start from scratch. Then we'll see true development and true businesses want to come here and spend money.
And that is the key, ladies and gentlemen, to economic development, to real economic development. The city has a budget, but true economic development will come from private sector investment. And in order to get that private sector investment, Vincent, break that down, that means people who want to invest in Niagara Falls, that doesn't include the government, business owners, people from outside of Niagara Falls, and we're not talking about the slum landlords that live out of town, that's holding on property, not talking about those. We're talking about people who build projects, they want to build projects, and they see Niagara Falls. They see us with the light, with the electricity, with the power, with the climate, with the water, and they say, Niagara Falls, I want to come invest. But in order to do that, we have to make Niagara Falls look good. So number one, let's get down to a couple of projects. LWRP, Local Waterfront Revitalization Program. That's something we can get serious about. There are meetings that's going to be occurring in the next couple of weeks. They've already had two, three meetings. We, as a city, have to get serious and get engaged about what's going on with this project, because Councilman Miles just talked about the waterfront. When you go to, just think about a city that has water, doesn't it look nice? Don't the houses cost more? Don't they, don't it just feel right, like I'm by the water? But we can have the same thing in Niagara Falls. So that's absolutely one project we can get serious about, and they want to invest in, and we have the water and the land, and the money is out there to do it. We tapped the, we tapped the New York Power Authority, they're generating billions and billions of dollars. Why don't we have a project that cleans up, number one, starting with our infrastructure, what's under our feet? Every day, every other day, every week, I'm getting a text message, the water main that Devolent is broke, the water main that displaced broke, the water valve at this place broke. I know it's the water board, but it's something as a capital project we can focus on, getting our infrastructure, our piping, what's under our feet, our sewer system, our wastewater treatment plant. You don't want to be drinking mud, do you? Let's get that back together. Let's invest in that project. And the other one, our park system. Beach Avenue Park has been another one. High Park, Rose End, do it all those parks. Thank you.
Mr. Colley kind of picked up where I was going to start off. While it's not a, as he noted, while it's not a city budgetary item, and it's probably an unspoken issue, outside of seeing it on Facebook and everywhere else, our aging water system is a problem. You know, we've had a good response with our water board appointee and updates along those lines, look forward for that going forward. But it really is a problem, not just the leaking pipes, but the wastewater treatment plant, you know, needs some severe updating, and it costs a lot of money. Again, that's nothing that the city of Niagara Falls can budget, as Mr. Colley noted, that's Niagara Falls Water Board. However, I think as city elected officials, from the council to the mayor, to assembly, to senate, to congress, I think we all need to be in one voice, going to our, you know, federal government and even the state and saying, you know, hey, Niagara Falls, pretty big deal in the state of New York, I think we need some help with getting our wastewater treatment plant and infrastructure. You know, it's unfortunate that we see the discharges in the Lower River and everything like that, the water main breaks everywhere, you know, our water board employees do the best they can to stand top of those things, but the reality is, the system But the reality is, the system's just outdated. So I think that's something that obviously, again, the city is not budgeting for, it's a separate entity. But I think we need to be a unified voice in making sure that gets addressed and the money's allocated to help us.
I believe we need to start reinvesting and pushing and supporting the small businesses. When Niagara Falls from, I mean, I'm in my 50s and I hear stories from people older than me, but I remember some of it, when Main, when Main Street was prosperous, when Pine Avenue was prosperous, it's because we had the small businesses and the city, and the citizens and the residents supported those small businesses. We've gotten away from that. Uh, I'm good friends with a person that owns a couple of businesses and it's terrible how she fights to get people to come to her, her business. She's one of the only buyers that's open past a certain time on Third Street. She tried to, she's trying to do it downtown. Uh, unfortunately, uh, Empire State Development or USA Niagara, they want to push everything to Old Fall Street. Old Fall Street gives nothing to the people that own businesses in our city. Uh, they ran successful, successful concerts on Third Street. We always talk about, there's nothing for people to do in the city. For three years, they ran successful concerts and it, those businesses then were able to profit from it. We're, we're getting away from it. Yeah, would it be great to bring a grandiose economic development in? Yeah, I mean, I would love to get a guy like Buffalo has, uh, Jamal, I think his name is, any of us, Millions. We, we don't have it in Niagara Falls. Until we get that, we're just spinning our wheels.
Long-term sustainability and equitable development do start from the ground up, like a house. You have to start with the foundation. Thanks for joining my ears to hear a couple of council members talk about this because as a real estate professional, I understand this is one of our biggest problems, upgrading our water and sewer infrastructure. Now I feel like I'm beating a dead horse. Um, reliable modern infrastructure is the foundation of everything. It's the foundation of public health, of economic growth, of neighborhood revitalization, and attracting new businesses. As a council member, I would keep this project a priority, uh, in multiple ways, including policy and oversight and budgeting. Making sure funds are allocated efficiently and consistently, even in tight years. I don't think a lot of people know, but the Water Board was a part of the city of Niagara Falls at one time. How it got to be a separate entity is a discussion for a different day. Clear standards and requirements for contractors need to be implemented as long as timeline, as long as timelines and transparency. So this project executed responsibly. The council can use its oversight and its investigative powers to monitor progress, ensure deadlines are met, and the residents and small businesses are not negatively impacted by construction because it is an issue. I would ensure the public engagement throughout the process by hosting community meetings, providing regular updates, and listening to concerns from you, the public. By combining strong oversight with transparency, residents' input can have a long-term investment in our city, which will cause it to strengthen and support growth that directly benefits, that directly benefits you, the people.
I think we need several projects going on simultaneously. Um, first, we need to hire a grant writer for the city. Uh, with the condition that we're in, we can get federal and state monies for streets, infrastructure, programming, and things like that. Um, I would also partner, continue to partner with the Niagara Falls City School District as they have the P-Tech program for students and they partner with the colleges to get credits. Um, as well as Junior Truck Stop, which is going to be turned into a vocational facility. Things like that. And then on Main Street, it's up and coming. Um, four properties was awarded to investors today. So it's, be hopeful, um, help is on the way. And just trust, just trust the administration, their leadership. Vote for leaders who will move the city forward, not tear it down. Thank you.
I've got a little different take on, uh, economic development. You know, big projects, uh, employment projects like Amazon, um, they have a lot of different variables. And, uh, we've been waiting for economic development in this city for sixty years. Uh, I, I think what we need here is we need to go back to what made Niagara Falls great at one point was working families back into our neighborhoods. And what I mean by that is working families that don't necessarily work here in this area. I mean, work on the quality of life issues so people want to live here. We've got a train station that sits right on the Canadian border. You've got a metropolitan area in Toronto that is bursting at the seams. Open it up to commuter traffic. You know, let people buy homes here that, that live, work in Toronto, let them live here. And, and the corridor that is between here and Toronto, here in Buffalo, open it up as a commuter station. It sits there vacant every day. It's a beautiful building. It, I don't know if anybody's been inside it or not, but it's, it's a, it's set up for commuter traffic. And, and that would bring working families back into our neighborhoods. From there, you start to see places like Main Street, Pine Avenue, Buffalo Avenue, Niagara Street, all develop. That's what we need to do, is we need to bring working families back into this community again. And, and to do that and to make it, make it so that they want to live here, we have a lot of work to do on quality of life issues.
Well, I saw, somebody mentioned a little bit about crime, so I wanted to ask a question about that as well. So this is for you, Mr. Rome. Niagara Falls has one of the highest violent crime rates per capita in New York State, which impacts our businesses and our residences. So beyond budget proposals for policing, meaning this has nothing to do with defunding the police or messing around with your budget. Outside of that, what actions would you take from your council toolbox to address the root causes of the crime in our community to make our neighborhoods safer for families and businesses?
Like I said before, um, policing is just a Band-Aid for the root cause of the crime around here. We need economic, um, development, jobs created for the working class here um, that are just not, you know, operating a hot dog stand at the arena. Um, we need real pay, you know, real good paying jobs that can support families. Um, our youth, it starts with them. It doesn't just start at home, okay? We need to keep our programs active for the youth, which supports the parents. Because when the parents, they can't afford to pay, um, sometimes, they don't have transportation, that's a real issue. Um, we need free programs for the youth. Um, cutting these programs do nothing for the crime rate. Um, we need to support our youth. We need to give them things to do. We need mentorship programs. Not only that, but let me go back to the pools and the splash pads this summer. That was a basic thing that our city should have been providing for our children.
Yep.
It was hot, they had nothing to do, they were disappointed. I was at Ninety First Street and I was trying to figure out why the pool wasn't open. You know, the mayor said it was graffiti. It was literally empty and being worked on. It was like being sandblasted. So I don't think it had anything to do with graffiti. Um, but the limited hours on the pools alone hurt our children. We need to start with our kids, we need to support our kids, and we need to support the programs that are being offered for the kids. No budget cuts there. They are our future.
One aspect of crime is, let's see, can somebody please finish the statement? Idle hands are...
Devil's first shot.
That's it. If we give our youth, like I was just saying, if we give our youth things to do, roller rinks, hockey rinks, uh, a, a, a place where they can go and just let out energy, community centers, ballparks, keep, let's get our parks up to date. If we feed our youth, we support people like people in the back there with, with the community center, with Packer Court and Niagara Falls Housing Authority. We start supporting this from a community perspective. So we have the community perspective over here, but we still got to have the structural perspective. Why can't we get some cops walking the beat to meet the people? If a crime happened, "Oh, I know Officer so-and-so, man, let me go tell him, he's mad cool, he ain't going to do nothing." He not going to go rat me out. We work with the anti-gun, uh, groups, we work with the community groups. We get the parents and the kids and the community leaders all together in a cohesive unit, working together. We have a liaison between if a student gets suspended, let's not have him out there just floating around. We have a group of men who can go to that student and say, "Hey, what was going on in school today, man? I heard, I heard you was acting up." Let's start putting a, 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 a standard on our kids so that they can raise it up instead of having them go to the lower standard. So that's crimes in our youth. What about crimes in the adults? Like was already mentioned before, let's start bringing in sec, private sector development so we can get full-time, livable wage jobs that they can sustain a family and do things and take care of their family that they need to do. Not depend on daddy government, but depend on their own agency, their own two hands, their own two feet. And live their life and have the honor, that dignity, that character so that they can take pride in living in this city and we can all make a better city and the city that we love. Thank you.
Does somebody want to answer for Davis? Is it all?
I'd start with urging more community events between our police department and our residents, our youth. Helping build the trust between the police and the residents will help us for people to start speaking up. I, I'm not sure how the old saying goes, but see it, say it, I believe it went. Where if you see something happening, you need to say it. You need to tell someone. The more we work together, the more we communicate with one another, the safer we're going to make our community. It's all about everyone looking out for their, for their, for their, uh, their neighbor. I was fortunate, growing up, uh, I played football, I played baseball. Uh, I ended up coaching football and baseball. My father did it, uh, my brothers, my older brother was a lieutenant on the police force. Uh, he tragically took his life, as a, he was a lieutenant, he had nineteen years on the force. But he dedicated everything he had to youth sports. That is an avenue that is, that we should push our youth to move them in. There's a memorial, there's things out there. We have a memorial fund in his honor. We give money every year. We donate over fifty thousand dollars to different youth sports. And it's to help kids and youth in this city who can't afford to register. And that's what it has to go for. It has to be able, they can register to play or they, if they need a glove, if they need spikes, whatever it is, that's what it's for. None of the money that we give to any of these youth groups, uh, goes for administrative purposes. It's all to help the kids and, uh, give them mentorship. Thank you.
I love that. A lot of talk about kids here. So I'll go a step further. I will give, every dollar I make in City Hall, that's forty-eight thousand dollars over four years, I'll give it all to the kids if you elect me. We will donate all of it to nonprofits. And in fact, if everybody here agrees too, then that means you'll have a hundred and forty-four thousand to the kids over the next four years. Crime is one of the biggest challenges facing Niagara Falls because it directly affects both families and economic growth. Policing is important, but it's only one piece of the solution. As a council member, I would focus on addressing the root cause, creating safer neighborhoods through a combination of policy, oversight, and community engagement, strengthen code enforcement, uh, and neighborhood revitalization programs and poorly maintained properties that are hotspots for crime. Ensuring our housing stock is safe and well-kept directly supports public safety. I'd advocate for programs that provide opportunities for youth families like after-school activities, job training, and mentorship programs. Giving people alternatives and support reduces the likelihood of crime before it starts. Third, I'd use the council's oversight powers to ensure the city's departments are effectively coordinating with law enforcement, community organizations, and social services. By tracking these results, we're holding agencies accountable and engaging residents in the process. And in the process, we can make neighborhoods safer and encourage businesses, families to invest in the city. Why not? I heard some people booing. We were giving money to the kids and that's a, that's a bad thing? I would think you'd want to elect people that aren't here for the interests of their pockets.
Okay, y'all, 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 hey, 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 y'all gotta chill. Y'all gotta chill.
Why don't you give them the forty-eight thousand, bud?
That's right. What's up?
Okay, hold on, y'all, hold on. We gotta let, we gotta let, uh, Bridget answer the question. Go ahead. He's not running for office right now, so... We gotta chill, we gotta chill, so she can speak. Thank you. Go ahead, Bridget, please.
Thank you. For me, I would work closely with the Niagara Falls Police Department and encourage more community policing. I would work with local block clubs, bridging the gap between the community and law enforcement. And then lastly, I would work with the Niagara Falls City School District on educating our young adults on the need for public service and getting them interested in that, in that field. Thank you.
Crime is obviously a problem in our city. There's no Boys Club anymore, there's no YMCA, there's no Girls Club, there's no Community Center. I wanted to see some of that casino money go to making the John Duke Center into more of a community, uh, a community-type place where seniors could go during the day and youth could go at night. But, uh, that casino money is all gone. Uh, we can work with, uh, you know, we can work with our police department, make sure they're trained properly, make sure they have the right equipment. But the bottom line of this whole thing is that so many of the laws or the way, um, uh, crime is, is, is governed now in New York State is out of our control. It's by the state legislature. So, um, you know, you have to really, uh, uh, go back to your state representatives and say you want some of these laws changed so that, um, you know, we can control crime better around here.
So you cannot talk about crime without talking about poverty. And we get super excited about chain restaurants like Mo's and A&amp;W and Church's Chicken when we don't have real livable wage jobs in the city for our kids. With that being said, we're not, we're not really ushering in things that are relevant, like tech jobs. These young people don't care about, you know, when you talk, when we're ribbon-cutting at, at, at a chicken joint, what are they going to make? They're going to make fifteen dollars an hour on a part-time job. That's nothing to raise a family. So that's nothing that's going to actually pull anyone back into the city. Right? So we need to, you know, go back, like, welcome in tech industry, welcome in AI and computer science situations. Because guess what? We're behind when it comes down to that. And stop cutting summer programs, cut, cutting funding for summer programs. I, I say this often in City Hall, um, Center Avenue Center tore down. Thirteenth Street Center, no more. YMCA is a homeless shelter, but we have not invested, as a, as a governing body, a dime back into these kids. What we've taken so much away from them, but then we point our fingers at them and say that they're the problem. What we have not set up any alternative for them to thrive in this city. So what happens is, is when they don't have something to do, they have their own devices. So when they do something that they have no business doing, it's because we don't give them any other alternatives. So we need to start focusing more so on that. Let's rebuild that portion and, and bring real jobs, not these minimum wage jobs. We're being cut for a chicken joint that don't do anything for our babies.
Hold on, we gotta give her some time. We got eight candidates, they need time to speak. Just chill, chill. Go ahead, Tanya.
Excuse me, sir, I think Tanya started.
A word?
Yes, sir.
Oh, so it's on me? See, you got me all messed up right now.
I'm sorry, but you know our babies first come out.
I understand.
Even, i- i- including my own daughter, at first they start out, they, they start out. Then they work themselves out to that, they work themselves out to a career. Uh, the kids got to build them up. It's not, it's not given to them. Uh, the children's gotta build them up. It's not, it's not given to them.
Okay.
You have to work.
Absolutely.
So ain't nothing given to nobody.
Okay. So, so let me move on. We only got a little bit of time left.
To youth organizations.
Okay, so let us, let us finish. We got a few minutes left. We gotta move on and give them an opportunity to finish these questions. Okay, excuse me, y'all. Excuse me. We gotta give them an opportunity to finish and share. Okay, 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 okay. Okay, so, so honor your apology. Honor your apology. Okay, so the question I have, we talked about a lot of things that's wrong with this city. This is not a question that you got in advance. So I'm about to throw y'all curveballs. But I want to know, what's something that is good about the city right now? That this city administration and our city council is doing? Just one thing. Tell us one thing that's going good with this city right now. Go ahead, Vince. It's on you. It's on you, Vince.
So, so, but before I ask this question real quick, um, if you have to resort to gimmicks and trickery to, to, to get on the council, how about the sweetheart deals that you've been given, give money back now? I've already given, I, you gotta catch up to me. I've already been giving money to organizations. So please catch up. But to answer the question.
So, like.
I love this city. We do have people like Dante Miles fighting. But I know, I see Mrs. Joe, Mrs. Joe Dokes at the corner of her street sweeping the leaves off the corner because she's take pride, she don't even live on that corner, but she takes pride in that corner. She's eighty, ninety years old, still gardening, still pulling out weeds, still on her hands and knees because she cares about taking care of her front lawn and her backyard. That's what I love about Niagara Falls. We have people on the corner of, of Virginia, still getting down in the dirt, immaculate estate. Immaculate, and this land across the street. The people in Niagara Falls care so much, they stay and they keep fighting whether they're eighty, ninety, a hundred years old. I love the fire in the belly of people who've been here for years. They may have, they may have lost hope, but they still continue to fight. They still continue to take care of their lawn. That's what I love about Niagara Falls and that's why I fight for Francine and LaSalle. I'm gonna fight to, fight for you to make sure we get council people up there who want to see things change. Niagara Falls, we have all the assets we need. We have all the people in this room. We have the ideas. We have entrepreneurs like Saladin. We have councilmen like Miles. We have business owners like, uh, like, you think about the, uh, Airbnbs? I know several developers. We have people like Mr. Mika Houston. Our, our fight, she's a fighter here for the STR, make sure things get right. We have fighters in Niagara Falls and all we have to do is unify together. Get the right people in city council, not bugged, not paid for. I have one motive. It's not a pension, it's not a career in this, it's to make things happen. So we unite with the good people that are still out there working and we can make it happen. Thank you.
So then you have the question again. What is one thing that you see that our city administration or city council are doing right now? That's a good thing.
Well, I'm gonna touch on one thing that I believe that was done, uh, and American Recovery Funds were used for it. The amount of time that the kids were able to use it, a lot of us may disagree, some don't. A lot of it has to do with staffing, but all three of the city pools have been completely redone. And I can take pride. I was the director at the time and pushed for that to get done. Sal Magley Stadium, we said we want things for the kids and we want stuff. Sal Magley Stadium has been fully redone. Top of the thing, we brought in Niagara, Niagara County Community College. They were number one in the country for many, many weeks last year. And they've been to the, uh, Junior College World Series for about the last five years. They play out of there now. Deuville from Buffalo has come down. They're playing out of our, our, uh, Sal Magley Stadium. Those pools are redone. A brand-new splash pad was put in the Millio Park, the center court, uh, area of the city. A beautiful splash pad. If you're not, if you're not seeing it, please go check it out. And I touched on that. I don't fully agree with the staffing, uh, how they staff it. It should be, it should be open. I agree with you. It should be open Sunday through, it should be open Saturday through Sunday. But a lot of it has to do with, with staffing levels. You can't, even as a splash pad, you cannot just open it and let kids run free. And if one of them gets hurt, God forbid, you need recades there or guards there to make sure for the safety of those kids. Okay, we talk about youth and we talk about the, that is, comes first, is the safety of our youth and our kids. Okay? We have to go into the school district. Start talking to these kids earlier. Talk about giving them a part-time job during the summer. I started off seasonal for the city of Niagara Falls. Thirty-five years later, I retired from the city of Niagara Falls. It's all about getting our work ethic again, but if you wanted something that the mayor's done good, I believe that's something that he's done.
Hold on, y'all. Well, this is supposed to be a forum. It's looking more like a debate, which, which I, which I like. Never heard of people getting, getting, getting upset with giving, uh, money to the kids. They're okay with taking money from developers, but, uh, God forbid you give money to the kids. So.
Yo, hold on, y'all. We gotta give.
There's the peanut gallery. They're, 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 they're always here.
Excuse me, y'all. Just give them a chance to speak, please. Please. Listen, hold on for a second. Yo.
Come on, guys. We like, we like the passion here. Everybody's passionate. We, we, we like this. We appreciate this. So.
Okay, listen, listen, listen. Yo, listen, yo, hold on, man. Hold on. Those of you who are talking the most, there would be another chance for you to get elected. Don't sit out here and talk and badger them when they got the courage and the conscience to get up here. Don't do that. That is disrespectful. Don't do that, Vince. Let them talk. Let them talk. Don't do that.
Supposed to be our voice, bro.
Yo, let them speak. This is not about you. Let them speak. It would be disrespectful.
I know we're all looking forward to watching Saladin run for council next. So, I, I, I keep it, I keep it super simple because I know we've gone over two minutes and I want to get this to the next person. I think the greatest thing the administration has done up until this point is balancing the budget. During the nicer administration, we, the budget was not balanced. And that's the first step in order to increasing the budgets. First, you have to balance it.
One of the amazing things that has happened thus far in this administration is the slow release of the chokehold against NFR in the city of Niagara Falls. This administration has taken this agency to court and we're finally moving forward. So the whole east side is not gonna be held hostage anymore. So I commend the administration for that. Thank you.
I think this, uh, this council, this administration should be commended on improving the bond rating of the city of Niagara Falls. They moved it up to triple A minus. And, uh, I think that's a very important step in moving the city ahead. So the council members that are here now, the administration should be commended for that. I think that's a really good thing. We're stabilizing, stabilizing our revenues. We're, uh, uh, not relying on casino revenues as much. And, um, uh, the bond rating seems to be stable, so, uh, I think hats off to them for that.
Um, being, being on city council for the last three and a half years, I would have to say the, probably one of the absolute most proudest moments that I had with our council was this prior, um, uh, one of our prior meetings that we just had. For, uh, speaking on behalf of the people. And it had all to do with, uh, of course, a lot of you may know the ice rink and the young kids that were locked out of the ice rink when, um, you know, when, when the administration didn't get the vote that they liked. So this go-around, when we came back and that, that, that same, uh, agenda item was brought back to us. The proud moment was finally our council actually voted on behalf of the people. Finally, the council listened, and I'm talking about my council majority, not the entire council. But the council majority finally took an ear to the people who stood at that podium and spoke exactly how certain things were going to affect them. My kids don't skate, but guess what? I have to. I represent every last one of those kids. And anyone that's up there, we should look at and be empathetic and not apathetic. We should be looking towards representing everyone that stands in front of us and speak to the truth to their quality of life issues. So us voting on behalf of what the people wanted and, and that right there was probably a proud moment that I would say that Niagara Falls City Council had done, uh, a, a good service for its people that we represent.
So I would just like to make this clear. The budget gaps were filled with ERPA funds. For those that don't realize, we had federal stimulus money, fifty-eight million dollars of it. So what the future holds for the next budget, who knows? The next two budgets, who knows? Fifty-eight million dollars and what do we have to show for it? A four-million-dollar dog shelter and an eight-million-dollar pole barn. So, let's just be real, okay? I have to dig deep into my soul for this one. Not that I don't think that some members of the council are doing a great job. But as far as the city and the council, I think it's the residents that I'm the most proud of. Okay? Because they're actually taking an initiative to get involved, to understand what's going on in our city. They're collaborating, they're unifying, and that is what I'm most proud of. Because in the last two years, I've seen so many groups of people come to City Hall and collaborate and become friends and share ideas. That's how we're gonna get things done here, but we do have to be honest with each other and we do have to be transparent. And we do have to also say that the mayor passed up three million dollars in a ten-acre parcel to build his Centennial Park Arena, but he'd rather spend our taxpayer money on two now eminent domain cases. Do we realize that? I'm here to share that with you tonight.
Okay, good. Yeah, yo, so we're at the end of the night, so we have one minute that I want to give all of the candidates to share their closing statements. And I challenge all of you to close on a positive note somehow. We heard a lot of negativity and a lot of the problems that's going on in the city, right? And I think it's important that we also consider what we're here for. It's to inspire, empower, and educate our residents and the property representatives. So again, you got a minute to share your closing statement and I, I challenge you to end on a positive note. Go ahead. Start with you.
Yeah, I put out a slogan when I started. People, some people laughed at me and said it's a little corny, whatever. But together, and I truly believe it's together, we can make a difference, okay? Working together, we can make a difference. If I'm lucky enough to get on the council, I look forward to working with my colleagues on there. If I'm not elected, I hope they're willing to work together. Because that's how we're gonna move this city forward, is by working together. If we stay divided, we're gonna just continue to have what we have today. We can't stay divided. We need to be unified. Vote two A. That's all I can say. Have a good night.
I mean, I apologize. This does say.
Yo, you apologize. Honor the apology. Yo, Jill, 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 chill. Chill, we're at the end. If you apologize, honor that. Honor that. Honor that. No, not right in the middle of them talking. No. Come on now.
Jill, we, we love your passion. We love it. We appreciate it.
You already shared all of yours and you dominated a lot of space. Respect's in space for all the folks. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You, you took up enough room already. Go ahead. Yo, yo, chill, chill. Dang. Come on, man. Oh, my God. Yo, read the room. Read the room. Read the room and chill out. Go ahead, dog. Go ahead, please. Go ahead.
United we stand, divided we fall. It's, it's pretty simple, everybody. I, I, um, I welcome debate. I welcome these forums. I welcome all the communication, all the passion that all of you had. Whether you like me or not, I appreciate you. I know you all want the best for Niagara Falls. I know that everybody up here on this table wants the best for Niagara Falls. I understand things get heated. Um, hopefully if anybody has animosity, we can, uh, we can all talk after and, and put our differences aside because I know we all want the best thing. God bless. Peace and love to everybody.
Thank you so much for this amazing opportunity. Again, my name is Bridget Miles and I will be the first African-American, if elected, to serve on a city council, something that's well overdue. Please vote. Make sure your household is registered before October twenty-fifth and vote on November fourth, ballot four A. Just pay attention, do your homework. If there's members currently on the council, if they're running again to get on the council, what have they done thus far? We don't have any more time to waste. It's time to move forward, not backwards. Thank you. God bless and good night.
This has really been a lot of fun for me. I haven't done this in a while. And it certainly is different. But, you know, I gotta real, you know, you gotta really look at this realistically. Um, I'm a conservative, you know, it's a democratic city. Uh, I don't have any support from the unions at all, so, you know, me getting elected is really a long shot. But I think you really have some good choices here. And, and, you know, if you happen to vote for me and, and by some miracle I happen to win, uh, I'll work as hard as I can for you and, uh, I got a chance to take my wife out tonight on a date, so she's happy about that.
Thank you, guys. Um, my name is Councilman Dante Miles, running for reelection on the write-in ballot. My biggest thing has always been is to give a voice to the people who have been faceless and voiceless for a very long time. Um, our city has not been, uh, people-friendly, business-friendly. We've put red tape where there should have been red carpet in many places. That's why we have not been able to get solid development in the city. With that being said, I hope and pray that every last person that's up here running has a heart for the city, one, but two, is running as an independent thinker. Because if you're not an independent thinker, you can be manipulated. And if you're manipulated, at the end of the day, you will be a cancer to this city because that has been, uh, our cancer for decades. Non-forward thinking, non-independent thinking. Make sure you do your homework. Make sure you come to city council meetings.
I could say a lot, but I'm gonna spare you guys tonight. I'm gonna remind you why I was at City Hall, because of an issue. For those that don't know, I've been a voice in attending every single council meeting for almost two years. And speaking at the podium, not just sitting there, speaking on agenda items, speaking for the good of the community. Regardless if I get a seat or not, because I know that's not promised, we don't know what November fourth will bring. I can promise you that I'm gonna continue to fight for the residents and the children and for a transparent government. You won't see the last of me, but I do hope and pray for your support because I do have a good heart and I hope that you do see that, that my ethics, morals, and values are intact. Thank you. God bless you all.
I am Vincent Colley and you can vote for me on three B and three C. To my candidates, I love each and every single one of you. No matter what happens here, we can have a sit-down dinner or one-on-one coffee anytime. It's not about division. It's not about division, it's about getting together on a note to move the city forward in a positive direction. And any person out there, you can get, you can come up to me afterwards, get my number, we can sit down. I'll sit down with everybody who wants to sit down, because this election is crucial, y'all. It is so crucial, I can't even tell you right now, don't have the time to. But the goal is to make, move Niagara Falls forward in a positive direction. Yes, we can, we can do it, we can do better, we can have more. What you see across the river, across the border, y'all, we can have that and even better, thank you.
So I just wanna thank the majority of you for being here this evening, and, you know, just being here and supporting our council candidates, thank you.